All right, if I can call the meeting to order and ask you all to rise. Selectman Marmion, would you lead us in the pledge?
Certainly. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just one quick reminder, in the interest of public service, since it's a little bit of a break with our tradition, the fireworks will be Friday night, July 3rd. That's Friday night, July 3rd, with a rain date on the 4th if that should happen, but this is Fairfield, and it doesn't rain on Fridays. All right, first item up, or next item up, the minutes to hear, or to consider and act upon the minutes of, can I take these as a group, or should we do this one at a time?
A group is good.
To consider and act upon the minutes of special meeting of May 28th, 2015, regular meeting of June 3rd, 2015, and special meeting of June 24th, 2015. May I have a motion to accept?
Some of.
A second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion or edits? Okay? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. All passed. So it's done. All right, next up, a reappointment, to hear, consider, and act upon the following reappointments to the Town Facilities Commission. This requires RTM approval. Stephen Pentanello, unaffiliated, 147 Trillium Road, for a term of 715 through 718, and Rodney J. Van Duzen, a Democrat, 157 Long Dean Road, for a term of 715 to 718. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second.
A second.
Are either gentleman here? Okay, so they're not here. Any questions from the board? Are, since they're reappointments, we've gone through them once when we appointed them Are you comfortable voting on them today, or do you want to postpone this till the gentleman can be here?
I'm good.
We're okay with that?
Yeah, I mean, I didn't hear from the gentleman the first time around, so I don't know them well, but I know that you both know them and respect the work that they're doing, so...
Yes, and Steve has also been serving on the Penfield Building Committee. He was one of the appointments there, so I think you probably got to know him a bit there. I've had a chance to meet with him as part of that process. He's also been helpful in a couple of other reviews, so I'm very impressed with his technical credentials and what he's been able to help with there.
I'm also curious just in terms of how the TFC is evolving, because I know that they've kind of, you know, they were, they were very active and they were a little quiet, and then you were looking at kind of how they might evolve to work with their building committees, so I'm interested in hearing overall how that's going.
Yeah, we can perhaps bring that back for top of the board at some point.
That would be great.
Just to be clear, that's still evolving? We're still looking for some clarity in terms of the exact function they perform, when they would get involved, and what they might do.
Right.
And we've proposed a couple different things, and I'm really, at this point, looking to get some feedback from the committee members themselves in terms of what they envision, how they'd like to see it work.
Right, so it would be interesting to hear from these gentlemen, since they've kind of, they're kind of merging from the past and present into the future, but I am comfortable voting on them today.
Okay. All right, any further discussion from here? Any comments from the public? All right, back to the board. Are we ready to vote?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good, and thank you. First selectmen appointments, and this is for information only. The Employees Retirement Board, this will require RTM approval. John B. Mahoney, unaffiliated, 520 Fulling Mill Lane North, for 1112 through 1117, and this is to fill a vacancy for Sanford Herman, who resigned. May I have a motion to accept? Oh, we don't have, it's for information only, sorry. My fault. That's done. All right, next up, Mill River Cleanup, to hear a report on the Mill River Cleanup Project from TRC Solutions. Given Mill River is such a big piece of our town, given the Excide Battery Factory was such a key piece, and because a lot of our, a big piece of our commercial development in the future is planning based on this being completed, because people have been watching the hoses across the river, the big blue draining structure that's on the site, thought it would be good to have TRC come in and give us an update as to where, briefly, an overview through the board, so if you could introduce yourself to the board and the floor of yours.
Certainly. Mr. President, I am Barry Kulp. I'm the project manager for TRC. We are the contractor for Excide Group Incorporated, and for some reason I don't have a signal.
All right, would it make more sense for us to kind of move on the other side and kind of watch the presentation?
So, for those of you that are unfamiliar with the project, the project is the dredging of lead-impacted sediment from the upper reaches of the Mill River down to the Title Dam. There are five sections of the river that we're currently working in. They're individual study areas. Study Area 5 is north of Interstate 95. Study Area 1 falls between the Railroad Trestle and 95. Study Area 2 falls between Post Road and the Railroad Trestle. Study Area 3 falls between Post Road and the Tide Mill Dam, and then Study Area 4 is a little small area just on the other side of the Tide Mill Dam. Currently, we have completed Area 5 as of last winter. We completed that from October to December of 2014. We remobilized the site in early March and began dredging Study Area 3 on March 23rd and completed that in May 15th. The importance of that is there is a shellfish migration blackout period that falls between May 1st and October 1st, so it was very important that we get this portion of the river completed during this timeframe. Due to the cold weather, we've had this past winter, there was a delay in the start of the spawning season to the 15th, so we were able to get the study area complete. Dredging in Area 1 began May 16th, and we completed that actually Monday of this week, and we just started dredging Area 2, which is right in front of the facility property. We will work on completing Area 2 and then take a break, most likely toward the middle to end of August until the shellfish spawning period ends, which is October 1st, and then we will move into Study Area 4 on the other side of Tide Mill Dam. Our goal is to complete all our dredging this year. All of our in-water work is hopefully going to be done this year. As part of our dredging activities, we've got turbidity curtains up. If you've passed over Post Road or 95, you've probably seen the yellow buoys that are in the water. Those are turbidity curtains. They surround our dredge area. They keep the turbidity and any suspended sediment from leaving the study area where we're dredging. We've also got turbidity monitors that are located upstream and downstream to make sure that we don't have any turbidity escaping our dredge curtain. On the facility property, the material that is being dredged is pumped in a slurry form up to the facility property where the material goes into these large geotextile tubes. The water comes out of the tubes, and the water is then run through the on-site treatment plant that we constructed in August and September of last year. And there's an overview of, just a schematic of what it looks like. So, material is dredged from the river and is pumped up into these geotextile tubes. The water that comes off of there goes back through a lad and into our treatment system, and then is pumped back out to the river. That water is monitored to make sure that we're meeting our required MPDES permit requirements, and so far, the system has worked flawlessly. Here's a picture of what the dredge looks like in the river, so you can see, as I was describing, the yellow turbidity curtain surrounds the dredge cell, and then there's a section of the dredge here that's called the ladder that contains the hydraulic cutterhead that is actually what goes down and stimulates the sediment so it's vacuumed into the discharge pipe. You can see in the background, there's an orange discharge pipe that actually transports the slurry back to the facility. Another picture in the foreground is one of the turbidity monitors, and those record turbidity on a, on a five-minute cycle and is logged. So dredge cell data, we, as part of our requirements for the Sediment Remedial Action Plan, sorry, I thought I had turned that off. As part of our requirements to meet the Sediment Remedial Action Plan goals, we have to achieve a 95, 95% upper confidence limit of less than 400 milligrams per kilogram for, for the sediment in Area 5. Areas 1, 2, 3, and 4 is less than 220. They're, they're significantly different areas of the river, so the, the lower limit was chosen for the area that is closer to the shellfish. So what we saw when we collected our samples, as we completed dredging, we completed, we collected confirmation samples from the dredge cells, and we calculated UCLs that ranged from 243.9 to 347 milligrams per kilogram, which is well below the 400, and our overall site for, for Area 5 was 271.8. And this is a figure that shows the various dredge cells, and so each of those colors were grouped together as a dredge cell, so there was turbidity curtain that went around the different groups of colors to keep them bound together. So for dredge cell 3, as I was saying, our cleanup goal is 220 milligrams per kilogram, and our, and we had to, again, achieve the 95 UCL and make sure that no individual sample results was greater than two times. What we saw in the individual cells in Area 3 was a UCL that ranged from 103.5 to 175.3. The overall was 139.9. And again, the various dredge cells, you can see a larger portion of Area 3 was dredged. Area 1, which is the one we just completed, is, we had two cells. One of them, the cell 1, which is to the west, is kind of an embayment, had a UCL of 145.8, and then the smaller cell on the east side of the river had a UCL of 165.7. So again, we were able to meet the requirements to move from that section of the river into Area 2. The overall UCL for the, for Area 1 was 140 milligrams per kilogram. So as part of our dredging activities, we're, we have various inspections that we have to do, turbidity monitoring, we have to leave a 15-foot fish passage corridor around each dredge cell to allow the fish to migrate up and down the river. We have to do discharge monitoring to show that our treatment system is effective. We do air monitoring around the bags, the geotextile tubes, to make sure that we don't have any odors coming off of those. We monitor the temperature of the river to make sure that the water that we're pumping in and the water that we're pumping out are roughly the same temperature, so we're not creating thermal plumes in the river. And we do stormwater monitoring on the site to make sure that if we get big rains, we're not washing sediment into the river. The, to date, all the, all remediation has been performed in compliance with the requirements. I guess an easy, one slide that I did not include is what's left.
Okay.
So what is left is, the plan is to be complete with Area 4 dredging by late October. Then we will have final verification samples, which is collecting samples from the entire reach of the river to make sure that we've achieved our cleanup goals. Once those are collected, we'll prepare a report to send to DEEP to get their approval that, yes, we have met the requirements of the SEDRAP, and assuming that we get that approval, we'll begin to move, remove the equipment from the river, and then we will demobilize for the winter. Late winter, early spring, we will start having trucks come into the site, and we will begin offloading the material to an off-site landfill. That landfill has yet to be chosen, only because until we know exactly when the material's going out, landfills are very particular about holding space for us, just because they don't, they don't want to say, yes, we've got space, and then they're full and we can't submit the material. So we will, as, as the time gets closer, we'll choose the landfill and ship that material offsite, and then we'll demobilize the water treatment plant and the rest of the upland facility and get the property back in shape to get it back in the tax bracket.
Go ahead.
I have some questions, just building on what you just mentioned in terms of the landfill, and you're not going to sort of look for the landfill until we know the exact timing, et cetera. The expense of taking the material to, I mean, are you looking at landfills in the immediate area? Are you concerned about not having availability at nearby landfills?
We are looking at landfills in Massachusetts, Pennsylvania. We've talked to some landfills in Connecticut as well. It's, it's more of a, they call it airspace in the landfills. It's the availability of the space in the landfill for disposal and not knowing exactly how much volume's going out precisely and when it's going out. We've got a good idea of volume, but until we get a firm grasp on it.
Okay, so there won't be any surprises in terms of the volume of landfill? We've just had issues in the past in other areas where we didn't...
Oh, no.
No, okay, so we're pretty much on track?
Yes.
From a timing and a cost perspective?
Yes, ma'am.
With the landfill? And just an overall question, building on that, any surprises, any, any surprises that have come out during this process that we should be aware of, or has it been pretty straightforward and what we expected?
As far as remediation projects go, it's been fairly straightforward.
Fairly straightforward?
Yeah.
Okay.
You always run into challenges, and my job is to look forward, not next week, not next month, but three months down the road, six months down the road, and see what type of challenges we're going to run into, things that could trip us up and make the, make the people know that need to know ahead of time so that they're not surprised.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
And just to clarify, so there's a cost question there. This is all being done at, I'm going to say Excide's expense, but so it's, there's no cost to the town in this?
Thank you for that.
Yes, yes, there is no cost to the town. It's all being provided by the Excide Group.
Great, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Thanks for the update. Question about the material that you're collecting now?
Yes.
Like, where is it? How safe is it? How was, how was it being treated and, you know, segregated from other areas? And how much, you know, how much is there?
The material in Area 2 is being stored in separate geotextile tubes, so we've actually identified that this material is going to be stored as a separate material.
Okay.
It will be tested before it goes offsite to determine whether it's hazardous or non-hazardous, and can be disposed of as a hazardous waste or non-hazardous waste. If it is a non-hazardous waste, then it will go offsite the same way that the other material is to one of the landfills in the Massachusetts, Pennsylvania, Connecticut area. If it is hazardous, it will be shipped to a facility called Clean Earth in New Jersey for treatment, and then they will send it offsite for disposal as a non-hazardous waste.
Okay, so all the material that you have identified is leaving the site regardless of the category?
Yes, yes.
It is?
Everything, everything we're dredging from the river is leaving the site, yes.
Okay, and it's safeguarded as, as much as it can be safeguarded now from access or getting back into the land or the water?
Yes, yes, we, the, as part of our upland construction, we built a basin that is lined, it's got a double liner in it and has rock, and the water that comes off drains into a sump and is pumped to our treatment facility. The material that is stored in the geotextile tubes, the facility is surrounded by fence, and during all four hours, we have a security guard to...
You do?
Yes.
That was one of my questions, is it safe?
Yes.
Or keeping, keeping people away from it?
Yes.
I got the question is, just kind of a big-picture question, and I know you're doing this in conjunction with the town and with our conservation department, or at least overseeing it to some degree, or at least keeping an eye on it, right?
It's, it's really...
How is that working?
Okay, it's really the state, DEEP, that's working with the contractor, and this is really a state project.
Correct.
And the town conservation does not have a formal role.
Role, okay.
However, conservation has been monitoring it, as well as the Fairplan Neighborhood Group. The, our contractor, TRC, has been very open with, with meetings, and I think I just saw emails on one being scheduled coming up to keep folks up to date.
Yes.
There've been a few minor speed bumps in, in terms of some of the things that have happened, but pretty minor, and they've been very public with those, and both reported, DEEP has reported to Fairplan, but also the Conservation Commission, the Shellfish Commission, and the Harvard Management Commission have all continued to be involved, and there are emails going out, I'm going to say about once a month with updates.
Very frequently.
Okay, that basically get copied to everybody, so everybody has a good picture as to what's going on. So I don't want to say that they're responsible, because it's really DEEP and Excide that's doing it formally, but the practical side, they've been very open in terms of keeping everybody involved.
Okay, and the overall thought is that the project is moving forward properly into everyone's approval?
Yes.
Okay. The last question I had is, would it make sense at some point, could we get a tour of the property? Town bodies, or at least our body, or? I haven't walked that site in a very, very long time, and certainly not since any of this work has started, and I don't know what, you know, I just, I see the pictures, and it, it's not easy to visualize or to, you know, understand what is really happening there, and you know, until you really walk the grounds and put your boots on and see it, and have someone say, this is that, and you know, this is this. So is that something we could arrange at some point? Would it make sense?
Would it be possible for the board of selectmen to have a tour like that? I know when, when it was shut down, it was in the winter, it was cold. Before you started up, you were able to do that when it wasn't working.
Right.
Are you able to do that now?
We can, we can look at a date as we get closer to our shutdown for, between this dredge season and the fall dredge season.
Sure. That's like, is that the August time frame you're talking about?
Yeah, August, late August, early September is kind of what, or we could even do it later and do it in, late September before we get started back in, in October.
Okay, I just think it would be beneficial to actually walk the site and, you know, have a firsthand understanding of what's going on and what it feels like.
Sure.
If we could set that up for this board, that would be super.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Jen, if you could make a note of that on that side. Any other questions from the board?
No.
Just, I want to clarify, from a standpoint of what we're dredging and the material that is hazardous, you will, of what we're trying to get out, it's basically lead from the Excide Battery Factory.
That's correct.
Now, there is some chromium, I believe, that may get caught up at the same time because of the plating company across the river?
That's correct.
While that's not your primary obligation, actually, that's, really isn't any obligation on your part.
Yes.
Because you're dredging, if they happen to be co-mingled, they both might come out.
Exactly, yes. If the material's co-mingled, then it will come out with, with the lead-impacted sediment.
Okay, but the objective of this project is just to remove the lead?
Correct, yes. To remove the lead from the river and put it back, have the river be a better body for, for the, for the town.
Okay. Any further questions from the board?
Just one last question. You've talked about the next steps in the process, and I heard you taking us into next spring for approvals and, you know, final sign-off. What is the estimated date for, you know, being done, done?
I am anticipating it's going to be sometime late next summer.
Okay.
When we'll have all of our equipment offsite and all of our guys scattered to the land again.
So roughly a year?
Roughly a year.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for all your help as well with, with all the discussions that we've had in the past and helping set up our public meetings and the meetings with the various boards.
No, my pleasure. I think this has been a good example of three boards, a neighborhood organization, working with state DEEP and a contractor, as we've gone through this. That's a lot of communication taking place, and I want to thank you for being as open as you can, as you have been with that. And again, thank you very much for coming here today. It was a good update to the board in terms of where we are. So again, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And then, next up, the Flood and Erosion Control Board, to hear an update from the Flood and Erosion Control Board.
If you remember, we had a, Dick's going to, you should have gotten a email copy, a PDF copy, there's a hard copy for you. We made a presentation to you, I believe in January, of what our conceptual plan was and the 12-step segments of it, on how to prevent flooding into the basin behind the beaches. You asked us to go out and have meetings with the public. We had scheduled three. One of them got snowed out in our nice mild winter. The other two we had were well-attended, considering we had very poor publicity on them. It was basically word of mouth. We got 110 people to show up to the two, two meetings. Those that spoke were generally favorable to some form of flood protection. They weren't totally knowledgeable as to what our conceptual plan was. There were, there were a few that were adamant they didn't want anything. Could be because their house didn't get damaged. We tried to look at it, is the enemy being Long Island Sound when a storm hits? And it gets into the flood plain, as you're aware, we had water in the parking lot here. This is probably the worst storm the town has experienced since 1938. Our objective is to stop the flooding and to get it out quickly. In the brochure that we just gave you, there's an appendix, these are the letters. We got in the official minutes from the two meetings, texts of emails that we received. We also had a meeting with the Fairfield Beach Club after this, because they were concerned about the wording in our conceptual plan. Dick and I met with them. We then listened to their situation and realized that we may have been a little too strong in our wording. At our subsequent meeting, we made an amendment to it, published it to our conceptual plan, put it on our website. We have also had a meeting, I'm kind of jumping ahead here, but you'll see there, there's the favorable comments versus the unfavorable, and those seeking an understanding. I won't bore you by reading the whole thing in front of you. If you remember, we did break up our, I'll get this up so you guys hopefully see this, break up our situation into 12 segments. The first one being at Riverside Drive, in that area behind, area between Turney Road and Riverside Drive. We have had meetings with a couple of the individuals there, and we've learned that the water didn't come in what we thought it did. It kind of came in through, through town-owned property, where there's a SRT now, it floods the marshes between...
SRT, Mr. Grauer?
Self-regulating tight gate.
Okay.
Conservation, I don't know. There's a public access from Riverside Drive that goes into the open spaces to the east of the parking lot at the... There's a public access from Riverside Drive that goes into the open spaces to the east of the parking lot at Marina, and that's where the SRT is located. That is a low area. The SRT is designed to allow a regulated amount of water to get into the marsh area and beyond. When the area there got topped, the SRT was ineffective. Because it got topped and an unmeasurable amount of water got in, went over Turney Road, made a right-hand turn and went down Riverside. It didn't come in directly off of Ash Creek. We've had conversations with Public Works, because it's town land, possibly just going in there with some fill and raising that elevation. Nothing yet has been done, but we're talking about it. The second segment here was South, the South-Benched Stormwater Pumping Station. As you learned from the pumping station at the wastewater treatment plant, it's big bucks. It remains a priority, but until we can find a grant to do, to fund it, we can't see moving ahead, because it's, it's a big burden on the, on the tax dollars. We do, however, feel that if we did a, a cost-benefit study on it, it may make it better for us to, to get a grant. That study has, hasn't been done, we also don't have, currently don't have the funds for it.
Could you just remind us what the approximate price for that was? I forget from your presentation. Do you remember?
Seven, seven million?
Seven million?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
The idea behind it is, all of our storm drains are basically, because we sit in a floodplain, horizontal. So, they, they don't drain, when the, they all drain into Long Island Sound or through its tributaries. And when the tide's high, it doesn't drain. So, the idea of a pumping station is you drill a big sump pump hole, put a pump down in it, and then pump it out over the embankment, so that your storm drains will work.
Thank you.
Segment three was the Fairfield Beach Club. This was our most boisterous item. It was the largest attendance of people, those living north of Fairfield Beach Club. They were all really concerned, because they can show evidence that the water comes across the Fairfield Beach Club, because they get the sediment from the tennis courts in their yard. Our concept has been, because the Fairfield Beach Club hasn't done anything, they weren't interested in doing anything. After having a meeting with the board of directors and president for the Fairfield Beach Club, we did learn they have commissioned their own study from Robert's company, or Race, as to what they could possibly do to mitigate flooding. They were not particularly happy with the idea that we came up with the concrete wall along the south side of Fairfield Beach Road to contain the water from coming across the street. We, we have another tentative meeting with them, the date has not been set, I've had correspondence with the president of the beach club. Our hopes are to come up with a somewhat of a compromise and move closer to the water and work with them to try to come up with something on, on their property that is, will protect them and the neighborhood behind them.
That, that proposed wall, what, what was the length of it, where was it starting and stopping?
It starts at, at the berm, where they call the gardens at the end of Beach Road.
Okay, yeah.
Comes across the opening with a watertight gate that would be closed there. Continues all the way down either behind, and this is where we come into a couple of variables. It either goes behind the three houses between Rickards Beach, or it comes up to the high berm in front of them and goes, goes across the beach.
Yeah, I see.
But it would go, you're basically looking at a six-foot wall along the road, separating Fairfield Beach Club from the street. So, water that came across their property would be trapped on their property and hopefully not get into the neighborhood.
Got it, thank you.
Just in terms of, there are letters that were written, I'm not sure the timing of the letters, or emails, rather, specifically about Fairfield, the Fairfield Beach Club, talking about, you know, has there been consideration of a natural dune versus a cement wall?
It's still, it's still up in the, up in the air, we, the initial, ooh, it's on its chair. The initial meeting with Fairfield Beach Club was primarily their concern over the wording of our initial conceptual plan. They started off as an adversarial meeting, it ended on a good note. We've had correspondence with the president, who's been traveling outside the country and been involved with other business situations. He has gotten back to me to have another meeting and walk the property. I've walked it with Joe Michelangelo and Laura Pooley from Public Works, and we've come up with some other ideas to be on, on their property. They would give them some protection and the neighborhood protection. Whether they'll go along with it, or there's a further compromise to the whole situation, it remains to be worked on. But we're working towards something.
I mean, are there, during the conversations, people are looking at the options, obviously? The research and studies that support a wall versus a natural dune with grasses, et cetera. So, you're looking at the options, and it's backed by research and what's helped in other towns?
We have the study from Race that the Fairfield Beach Club commissioned. We've looked at that, we've talked to our, Public Works, come up with some different ideas. Flood protection is really not rocket science, there's only one thing that stops flooding, and it's elevation. And it, you have to have an elevation somewhere along the line. Top of the reef of the hill is highly unlikely to flood, at least not from stormwater, from the sound. But the low-lying beach area is a whole different story. When it tops the barrier beach, you've got a contour, you've got Long Island Sound, your barrier beach is basically sand pushed up by, by, by nature, making a berm. Behind it, it's all low ground. When the waves top that berm, there's nothing to stop them and keep going through the floodplain.
Sure, I'm just looking at that, that, the berm versus the wall, from a static standpoint, from a...
We're looking at, in some places you have room for berms, other places you don't have room, distance between physical structures and, and the, you lean high tide line, so you're looking at hard structures, or you're looking to abandon the shoreline and go north of Fairfield Beach Road, in which case then you're looking at a hard structure, which is one plan that engineering put together. We've found a lot of resistance from neighbors about the idea of that.
Sure.
Because you're gonna have to put berms in all of the streets leading to Fairfield Beach Road, or put watertight gates across them, you're gonna have hills in people's yards as you, as you contour the berm and the road, it's gonna affect driveways. And then, which side of berm do you live on? If you're north of the berm, you like not getting water, if you're south of the berm, you go, wait a minute, my tax dollars are helping to pay for this, I want protection too. You've got over $100,000 worth of taxable real estate south of this landward berm that wouldn't be protected. And they're saying, wait a minute, we want the protection too.
Mr. Grauer, did you say $100,000 south of the berm?
Oh, it's over $100 million. In taxable real estate. And, and this doesn't go all the way out onto, onto the peninsula, on any of our plans. We stop at the, at the first hump on Fairfield Beach Road, which is where the sewer outfall is. The goal is, you have to, if you're gonna come up with any sort of a berm, you've gotta go from some high ground to the next nearest high ground, which is the wastewater treatment plant. Somehow, we have to get from your berms at Jennings Beach to the wastewater treatment plant. That's, that's the goal, to stop the water from getting into your, your main floodplain. Fairfield Beach Club is the first, the first obstacle. The three houses to the west of there didn't get topped. Rickards Beach, I don't believe, was topped. Penfield One got topped. And as you go west of the Darrell Pavilion, you had water coming through there.
What, just to build on that, the three houses to the west of the beach club were not topped. Did they have natural sand dunes, that kind of blocked that water, is that what?
They're, they're built in pretty high ground on a high, high, high dune to start with. We'll get into some of that elevation bit in a minute. Penfield One, we've had a lot of, there's a segment four here. It was just shown here, you can see this little outline here for Penfield One. It has a bulkhead around it right now, that flood erosion originally proposed after the building was built, because the original building committee didn't wanna do anything about flood protection, they just wanted a pretty building, and flood protection wasn't in their charter or their concern. We, we've looked at the situations, talked to officials. FEMA has placed the beach east of Reef Road into a V-13 zone, which simply means they anticipate water elevations to 13. The current wall at Penfield is at 12. We have heavily lobbied the rebuilding committee to add three feet to that, to bring it to 15, because it won't block any view, because the new pavilion will be up above that. We've sent a letter to your board asking you to ask them for, to ask their engineer for a cost structure of widening the rock face that they wanna put in front of the bulkhead to prevent scour, to support a future three-foot elevation. You didn't send a letter to the rebuilding committee, they haven't liked that. They did spend $9,000 of their money. It was appropriate to them to do a study with Race, who came up with three plans to prevent flooding, none of which jived what we've been asking for. Those plans have been presented to the rebuilding committee, I don't think any are going to be followed. One of which was to raise the, the beach, the sand elevation to elevation of 15, when you probably got an elevation eight, eight to 10 on the rest of the beach. So, I don't know if we're gonna put steps on the east side and the west side to get up on top of the new sand hill. The other one was to raise the parking lot to elevation 15 and put a series of ramps to get into it. And the third one was to build a big concrete wall along the street with a watertight gate to trap the water on the property where the bulkhead is stopped. Currently, the segment four for the, for that is to extend the wings on the existing bulkhead, which is that the bulkhead being at roughly elevation 12. Extend it east and west into high ground and put a rock face in front of it. The town received a $225,000 grant to, to do this, which will prevent scour. It will not stop. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. The rock face hopefully will stop the scour, it will not stop the topping, the wave action coming over the bulkhead, should we get another storm like Sandy. It will stop minors, lesser storms. It is, it is what it is. The town, your, your board and the rebuilding committee has elected to stay at elevation 12, which brings us to our next situation. The stretch between Penfield One and Reef Road. Again, our, our thought was, we wanted a two-foot run-up for wave action. With being a V-13 zone, two-foot run-up means you're getting a wall at 15, which now doesn't make a lot of sense, because it would, if you get onto our imaginary time machine, we built this wall to an elevation 15, or a berm to an elevation 15, we would then have to come back and remodel Penfield Pavilion again, making that up to an elevation 15 protection. Because that's already been decided to stay at 12, we're now considering, let's just go to 12 along the beach. From what we've been able to determine, we don't have official mapping. We did get some maps from Army Corps of Engineers, which very nicely, as you go to different elevations, shows you where your holes are. Laura has given us a couple of maps that, that show some low elevations. And if you drive between Darrell Pavilion and Reef Road, and you look toward the water, you can see out in some places, you can picture where the water comes in, particularly as you get closer to Reef Road. There's a possibility going in and just trying to Band-Aid some of this. But our main goal has been to provide protection for the whole floodplain, rather than, than the Band-Aids. And like everything else in towns, we're limited by money. Segment six is a portion from Reef Road to the sewer outfall. There was two plans on here. Get over here, there's one that goes, this dotted line goes behind the houses, the other one goes along the beach. This is your sewer outfall here. We did have a member who has a house on the beach come to one of our meetings and clearly stated he would prefer something in front of him. His desire varies depending upon how high it goes. He wasn't sure what the elevation was in front of his house, to know how much higher it would have to go. But he asked that we first consider doing something on the beach, and it's the feeling of the flood erosion board, do we protect as much property in town as possible? And we look at the, the sound as being the enemy, and we wanna confront it on the shore or offshore. We just went to a, two of us just went to a, what do you call that thing? A living shoreline seminar in New London. And one of the speakers there was advocating offshore protection. Where you have jetties and things offshore in, in the water, would trip the waves and stop some of the erosion. All things that have to be looked at by engineering firms, coastal engineering firms, but it was, it was enlightening. We've also had members from the state, and there's a whole alphabet of what the agencies are called, saying that there's a possibility of bringing sand into the beaches to, to raise the elevation. As Mike knows, the town is currently looking at something they call engineered beaches, which, when I asked at the seminar of the officials that were talking, what's the difference between an engineered beach and a natural beach? And they said, an engineered beach is whatever the engineer wants to make it. But FEMA's got the loophole in there, that if you have an engineered beach and you can document the elevations and the depth of it, and you maintain it, if Mother Nature wipes it out, FEMA will step in and replace it. I don't know, I don't know of any place yet that they've done that, but it's all something that the town is looking at. To jump ahead, segment seven is the Pine Creek Outfall, it's a tide gate improvement project, which we have received a grant for. We're very fortunate and got a 560 or 565,000 dollar grant to replace a, I believe it's a 48-inch flapper valve and a single pipe that goes through the hump on Fairfield Beach Road where the sewer outfall is. That is like draining an Olympic swimming pool with a straw. All the water that got into the floodplain, most of it had to go out through that 48-inch pipe. Reason it took, took so long, plus it has cast iron flapper on it to, to limit the amount of water coming in, and a, and you've got a round pipe and a flapper, it comes out maybe 45 degrees. So, it, it restricts some of the water. We will be putting in there two five-foot sleuth gates, which is simply a round pipe with a drop gate on it, operated by a manual wheel. Then when you open it, we'll let you five-foot diameter free flow, let that water out. Add it to that will be two 48-inch self-regulating tide gates to help revive the marshes between Reef Road and the sewer outfall, limiting to an engineered design how much water gets in there. Those SRTs also add as an additional exit for the water, should it get over the beach and into the floodplain. Our goal is, instead of having to take a week for the people to get back to their homes, we want them to get back the next day. Ideally, I'd like to see it the next tide. You gotta, you gotta tide change every six hours, let's get out. Before, before that type was built, it used to go out in six hours. Section seven is a, excuse me, oh, I'm just kidding. Section, section eight is a tide around the wastewater treatment plant, which we're also very fortunate. to got a grant for and it's currently being studied. That wastewater treatment plant services 17,000 residences or businesses should get contaminated with saltwater. It's a huge nightmare and a very big expense, so this will be a real plus to the town. Number nine on this was a second sleuth gate on Fairfield Beach Road. If you drive down Fairfield Beach Road going out on the peninsula, you go over the first hump, which underneath that is your sewer water, your wastewater treatment plant pumping it out into the sound. As you go along that stretch of the road until you get to the next hump, that road used to flood on paraguayan tides with no storm, perfectly calm water, just a high tide till you're driving through saltwater, you get down there. The town, I believe it was in the early 70s, put a bulkhead, a combination wood bulkhead and berm along the south side of Pine Creek to stop the water from coming in there. That berm then looped in and came across Fairfield Beach Road again onto a higher area on the beach. The problem is storm waters top the beach and get trapped in there. The rest of the road west of that second hump drains as soon as the tide goes out, perfectly dry, but you can't get to it. This sleuth gate is designed to evacuate that water faster. The one that we had in there doesn't do it fast enough, so we're hoping that the second one will. And we owe our thanks to the Neary family, who's granted us permission to have both of these sleuth gates on their property.
Could you just remind me how a sleuth gate works?
A sleuth gate is a round pipe. And across that pipe up here, there's a wheel. I turn this wheel and my hand being the sleuth gate, it comes down over this pipe and seals it. Now the water can't get through my imaginary pipe here until I turn the wheel and open this. It's designed to let the water on my side get to your side, not allow the water on your side to get to my side.
Is it manual?
Pardon?
It's manual?
Yes.
It is?
It's manual. It's a big threaded rod, a screw that basically goes down. You turn this wheel and slowly the door comes up on it.
I see.
The one on Fairfield Beach Road, currently the only one this town has, it works very well. It just doesn't do it fast enough because it's not big enough. And by the way, and that's been completed. The only thing remaining on it is the trash collection gate in the front so that we don't wash everybody's junk into Pine Creek. Segments 10, 11, and 12, we kind of combined it into one situation here. And that's along the line over here and get onto the north side of Pine Creek. And after the storm at the mouth of Pine Creek, there was some damage to the rock face there. The town looked at it. We had the Army Corps of Engineers come in and look at it. They got excited and said, hey, we're willing to do a study on this. They agreed to pay X dollars upfront and split the difference with the town. So because someone's throwing money at us to do the study, we said, oh, great, we'll make this a priority. Our priorities have varied, chasing money more than actual where the flooding comes. Not wanting to lose opportunities to get, I guess what you'd call free money, it's your tax money coming back a different way. We've met with the residents from the South Pine Creek. We've gotten a lot of pros and cons about it. Because the dike wasn't topped, and Sandy, by the way, wasn't your 100-year storm. There were a lot of people along there saying, we don't need anything. We didn't get topped. It came real close to getting topped. The Army Corps initially looked at it and said, the cost-benefit study, the ratio was favorable on it. We walked the whole existing dike situation with them. They kind of realized, hey, this project is bigger than we thought. And they wanted to go back and re-estimate their costs for the study. Again, it's just a study and it was hundreds of thousands of dollars. And then they were anticipating, I believe it was a seven and a half million dollar fix. Where that money was coming from, nobody had any idea yet. But my personal feeling is if the cost-benefits ratio were good for the South Pine Creek dike, there's got to be a real positive cost-benefit ratio for your main beach because you have four or more residences between here and the beach than you do over there. If you go to the last page and when I met with Mike, this was the one he was most concerned about, it said, next steps. Our plan is to hold continuing information meetings with the public, establish a protection level the town wants to provide. And we're looking for some guidance on that. We said, we wanted to go minimally to the FEMA standard and add two feet to it, but with town beaches refusing to go above their existing height, we're saying, do you want to only protect to an elevation 12 and allow the big storms to enter the floodplain to a lesser degree than they do today? Or do we continue to fight and go for a better protection? If we go to a certified flood protection like they have in Stanford, then all of the homes behind there, they get out of the FEMA flood insurance. The certified situation, you're going to a big hike and then you meet some resistance.
Are you referring to the berm down in Stanford?
Yeah.
Okay, just to give, think of a berm that's big enough to drive a truck on. All right, and then has proverbial slanted walls coming out, so it's a wide base.
You need a wide.
In front of the residences right on the beach?
No, think of, if you drew a line down the middle of the beach area from Riverside Drive to Pine Creek. Now, that's not, I'm not saying that's a line, but literally in Stanford, there are houses south of that and houses north of that.
Okay.
All right. And it literally takes up, if you were to do that in our beach area, given where the house are, there would be properties that would have no yard.
You look at it, Joe, correct me, it's a two-to-one slope?
If you do it earth and three.
Three-to-one. So every foot you go up, you've got to go out three feet and you need some room on the top. So you're not coming to a point, you're coming to a plateau on the top. To give you a layman's look at the situation, the dunes at Jennings Beach wouldn't qualify for a certified flood protection. They would have to be raised and widened.
Yeah. I mean, some towns, don't they actually have boardwalks built on their, on that surface?
Yeah, you could do that.
I'm not saying that that's, but I know that that's what other towns have done.
It's a possibility, but to be honest with you, we're looking for some guidance from you. You're the elected leaders of the town and we'd like some input from you. It's just, how much protection are you willing to recommend for the town? We're willing to do the research and work, but we felt like we're kind of banging our head against the wall trying to go to a FEMA level plus two. So if you want to go to less, kind of let us know or where you'd like to go.
Just one last question on that berm. The plateau on top, is it, the plateau, is that, you mean, be wider for a vehicle? Did you say?
No.
Why does it need to be?
I was describing the Stanford one.
Oh, that's what it is just like.
It is that big.
It is that big, okay.
They've got pump stations down there, that a pump station, when you get down inside and see the big pumps, are bigger than this room that we're sitting in now.
Okay.
So they, you're talking, and you're also talking, they've got floodgates that close in front of the harbor.
Okay.
So you're talking a billion dollars worth in today's dollars.
And it's a lot of mechanical gadgets involved with it. You need maintenance, replacement over time.
Yep.
Does Stanford have businesses on the beach? I mean, are they zoned differently in terms of?
No, but it got into downtown.
If they don't have the floodgates that close in front of the harbor, downtown Stanford floods.
That's what, yeah, so I mean, it was an investment that was driven by the business, yeah.
That's massive.
Yeah.
Yes.
Anytime you get a mechanical device to control your flooding, you're subject to failure, maintenance, and replacement. We're trying to look at something, build it once and walk away, where we don't have to go back and have a mechanical device to it or ongoing maintenance unless it's destroyed. Our initial conceptual plan was a situation of berms, walls, engineering-wise, they tie into each other, what you build, what you can, trying to be as natural as possible where the land is available. When you don't have the land, you go into what they call a hard structure, more of a vertical wall with hopefully something to prevent the scour. One thing which we're trying to do is document the shoreline profile and identify the lower elevations, which be priority location for flood protection barriers. Laura Pooley's been helpful in giving us some maps that show some topographical lines. We're not sure just how accurate it is, as is the Army Corps of Engineers has supplied us with some mapping. That west of Reef Road, we're trying to get the maps to go east of Reef Road to correspond to that because as you punch in on your computer screen, elevation nine, it shows you where your holes are at nine, where they are at 12, and so on. It's very helpful. Again, that helps you, if you were to not make obtaining money your priority in fixing flooding and you just wanted to go to fix flooding because you've got a fat checkbook, then you go and look for the low areas and you plug those first. You want to give us a fat checkbook, we'd be more than happy to go plug the low levels. We also want to offer small group forums to the residents directly impacted by the physical mitigation members. I'm currently trying to work with the Fairfield Beach Residents Association to host a, one of their meetings and invite the people between the Derell Pavilion and the sewer outfall that lives south of Fairfield Beach Road because our existing thought, if we build something along the beach there, it directly affects their property. So we want to kind of get their feelings, pros and cons about that. Currently, we don't have a date except for that meeting. We also plan to continue out all potential grants that are available. It's amazing how much money is and isn't out there in the competition for it. And I have to tell you, the public works, it's been doing really well and getting us money. Percentage-wise, for the money that's been out to the state, I think we've gotten our Stay abreast of resource activities and there you go into the whole alphabet of everybody's agencies. Our other thing is to improve our website so it references all of the flood topics. We've tried to make ourselves much more transparent to the public, giving them a website. We post things on it so that they can see what we're doing, see what's going on, answer questions. We've developed an email so they can email us with questions and concerns that we take up on our readings, trying to have an interaction with them. We also realize we need to develop a standardized vocabulary and definitions and post them on our website. When we start talking elevations, we say, well, we want a wall elevation 12. People immediately think you're building a 12-foot wall on your yard. They don't understand the elevation of their property versus the elevation of the wall we're talking about. If you're at elevation 10 in your property and we want an elevation 12 wall there, you got a two-foot wall. Doesn't block any view, doesn't do anything, but it does stop a lot of water. You take two feet of water depth, it's a half a mile long, continually flowing through there, just a lot of water. We also want us to make an email list so we're going to notify people on the list that are in the floodplain, keep them abreast of what we're doing because we don't feel it should be their job to constantly keep track of what we're doing. We want to be forthcoming and let them know what we're doing and in turn get their reaction to things. We also want to develop a survey to elicit input from a border resident base. We've talked about different wording. We haven't come up yet with a survey. Our plan was to take it door-to-door, pass it out, and have the people mail it back to us.
Throughout the entire town, the survey?
No, well, we would put it on our website also so that those people living, say, north of your flood basin could go onto the website if they wanted to fill it out. Our primary concern is the people that have been flooded. What is their concern? Did they have damage that was reimbursable by their flood insurance? They get forced out of the neighborhood, those that got forced out are already gone. Mike can think of one street behind Veterans Park, the whole one-sided street, all packed up left out. It's a complete transition. Open dialogue with as many stakeholders as possible. That basically being where we're talking about putting flood mitigation situations. We're going to do it in your yard. We want to sit down and talk to you and make sure that you're happy with what our conceptual ideas are. From there, if you're happy, it's much easier to go out and sell that to your neighbors. And it's kind of a one-on-one situation. When you get into a big public meeting and you hold up drawings like this, people don't understand it. Well, if you could sit down and explain it to a smaller group and show them what it's going to, how it's going to impact them, how it's going to protect them, you get a much better dialogue going back and forth. And we're trying to get to that point. It takes, it takes time. I'm almost embarrassed to say, look at the date we're in now and look at the date when Sandy was, and we still don't have a plan going forward where we're about to implement. We have protected, gotten money to protect the sewage treatment plant. We've gotten money to evacuate the water that gets into the floodplain. We have to stop it from getting in. And that's our primary goal. We want to stop it from getting in altogether. People, and I can speak from personal experience, living in the area all my life, the people that live north of Fairfield Beach Road don't feel that they're entitled to flooding or storm damage. The people that live south of Fairfield Beach Road, they're knowing that they're going to get flood, storm damage, and expect it. So you're dealing with two different thought patterns. And if you go to protect the people north of Fairfield Beach Road by putting something on the south side of Fairfield Beach Road, you need to come up with whatever you want to come up with for your structure, it's going to make the people on the south side happy and the people on the north side of the street happy that they're going to be protected. And to what level, they're going to be protected.
Besides Stanford, is there another town along the shoreline that we can look to that's had success, kind of satisfying these kind of different needs that you're choosing as a?
Is it Madison or New London?
Portions of New London, I think it's the Falkituck section of the eastern part.
Yeah, I think that the simple answer is there aren't many.
Not many, yeah.
Stanford spent, I'm going to say hundreds of millions of dollars when they did it, and it was a bunch of years ago, so that's why we're projecting.
They did it in the 60s.
Literally a billion dollars if you're going to do something today.
Yeah, you're looking at.
They're running their lines. The issue with all of these is, actually, I think there are two key, critical issues. One is just cost in terms of where's the money come from? And from a town-specific standpoint, what we're talking about grants, do you ask people in another part of town, another neighborhood, to pay that much money to protect people in a neighborhood near the beach? And that's a, and we want to stay out of a neighborhood versus neighborhood thing. The other issue within the neighborhood, and you see parts of it on here with some different options, is that you've got people that unless you build it along the beach, there are going to be people that live south of the wall or the berm. And that's, that's a little bit like deciding which of your kids you like least.
Yeah.
Right, but it's also eminent.
Here's another map that shows you the flood area. Everything in green here is subject to be flooded. And it all comes across this little berm south of Fairfield Beach Road.
Right.
If you can increase your elevation here, you stop all the water from coming in here. You put a wall back here, you stop all the water from getting here, but not up here.
And you've got to balance that between the fact that storms come, like Sandy, a 70-year storm, not 100-year storm, as it was explained to me. Which is seven tenths of a chance getting it any year, but on average, once every 70 years. Do you? Do you want to live with that wall in your front yard and have a view, no view for the 69 and 365 days that you don't have a Sandy? So those are all, and there's no right answer in that, but those are the trade-offs for a community decision.
The last big storm we had prior to Sandy was 1938 to an equivalent situation. We had a bunch of storms in the 50s. You had Irene right before Sandy. And we're actually fortunate to have Sandy and Irene together because it's gotten everybody to think about flood protection. If you go to these seminars that the state's been putting on, they're saying what we really need is another Sandy. So people will stop thinking about it and start doing something about it. Because it's amazing, once you clean up the debris in your yard, you fix the water damage, you forget about it, you move on with life.
And just, and again, the magnitude of money is bigger than anything this town has ever funded before.
Yeah. If you think building schools is expensive, to do a certified flood wall would make building new schools look like nothing.
Where does the concept of eminent domain, I mean, the individual, you know, homeowners in terms of that encroachment on their properties, one may say, I agree, the other neighbor next door says, no, I don't want this. How does that, I mean...
Eminent domain, eminent domain can always come into play. That's something the town has the authority on. Do you really want to go there, though?
Right, well, that's my question. It's really quite complicated.
Just to be clear, we're a long way from eminent domain.
I'm just raising it because it's really, it's a huge issue.
Better you should go to the Board of Ed and talk about redistricting.
You want to find compromises that are going to make everyone happy.
Sure.
Look, there are several big issues. One is that if we do a berm, we don't have land available to do a berm in the beach area. So you'd have some way of, you'd have to lose private property to do that. Second, we're talking based on what's constructed, exactly how you do it, how far, how certified you get or not. You know, $50 to $100 million in a project like this.
Certified situation is huge dollars.
So when we talk about grants, that's why we're getting it.
Really big situation.
It's not that we're not trying to solve this, but it's literally something our town has, would have trouble funding within that. I mean, our current bonded debt is around 200 million. This would, this would be 50% of that to protect one neighborhood in one situation for something that happens once every 100 years. So that's all part, and people in the neighborhood unfairly would have to give up part of their land.
Right.
Almost everybody, everybody would have to go, part of their view and access. So it would change the fun part of living in the beach area for many of the folks down there, and that's part of what...
Roughly 10 to 12% of the people live in this, live in this green area for the town.
So that's part of what Mr. Grauer and his committee have done. I think a great job of getting out to folks. A couple of quick questions, and I might, as long as I'm here. One, you mentioned poor publicity at the meetings.
It was basically word of mouth for the two meetings. A lot of people commented to us after the first meeting, and we didn't know the meeting was there.
Okay, why didn't we do more press releases, that type of thing around that? Can we give you help in doing that?
We asked to have money to do a mailing to the area, didn't get it.
Okay, you don't need money to let everybody know. We do public meetings every week, letting folks know where they are with press releases, using the papers, using the press, using direct media, using social media, getting on Facebook. So there are plenty of ways to publicize. Did we do those channels?
No, we didn't do as many as we should have.
Okay, why don't we talk about...
A lot of it because we weren't, we're not aware of how to do them. We haven't had a lot of experience at that, and we didn't get a lot of guidance.
And that's fair. Why don't we sit down, why don't we plan another meeting, and why don't we plan some a little bit better promotion for that meeting to give everybody a chance to get there?
More than happy to do that.
And I apologize, apologize that you didn't get some better guidance and support in doing that. Second, Congressman Himes with the U.S. Corps of Engineers has announced a big multi-county study of $300 million roughly to go into study. Have we had a chance to sit down with either the corps people or any of the people from his staff in terms of looking at the timing, the impact of that, and what they're doing, and how it might work with what we're doing here?
No, we haven't. Joe's department has been working with the Army Corps. When they talked about expanding the study from the South Pine Creek dike to go all the way over to Ash Creek possibly, as far as I'm, I know that's still in the talking stage. Nothing has been definitive about that. The Himes study is a, what I would call a global study. I believe it, and you probably have a better idea, that the distance of shoreline that it covers, but I know the Army Corps estimated cost just for studying the South Pine Creek dike was $450,000. And that's a little tiny dike in comparison to the whole shoreline, and that's just the study.
Have they come back to us with a definitive number? Because we removed that from an agenda one time because they didn't have a definite number on that.
No. Well, I haven't heard a number. Do you, Joe?
I'll speak to it in the big picture. The Pine Creek study that was proposed was just under the limit that the Army Corps could do as staff under themselves with the total $5 million project. Because as Mr. Grauer said, during a field walk of the Pine Creek area, the scope was bigger than they originally envisioned in their original report from September of 2014. So it has grown beyond that the Army Corps could do at their level, which is a 504 program. So it's, the bad news, it's larger than they could do as staff, but that involves the congressional delegations. And the good news is that they're not, since it is into the larger category, they're not only looking at the Pine Creek area, they've expanded it coast to coast to include the other parts of Fairfield and the other parts of Connecticut. So we are dealing with the gentleman from Army Corps up in Massachusetts.
Is that the same group that was working with the congressman's office and what they announced? Because I went down to a presentation in Stanford on that, and it seemed, it covered Fairfield and New Haven County.
Correct.
They seem to be rolling that out, and they seem to, but they needed participation from each of the communities as part of the planning process. Are you talking to the same people that were presenting there?
Yes, yep.
Have they made any progress with that?
I'd say we probably last talked about six weeks ago, so we haven't heard anything from that time. So they, so that, we'll get an update from them.
Okay. And that was, they were just talking about planning. They hadn't gone to the next step of implementing any of the things that come out of the plan. But this seemed to be, to be a natural for what we'd be talking to them about and getting their help with. And I think there were some residents in the beach area that asked that we make sure we include kind of the wider scope of plan from the U.S. Corps and the congressman's study as part of this project to make sure that we're comprehensive in how we look at that.
There were some people that came to the public meetings and thought that was, the Jim Heinz study was going to be the cure-all for everything. It's years out into the, into the future. We've tried to come up with a plan that's more of a micro-situation, pinpointed to the specific areas of the town. We've broken it up into the 12 segments because how to eat a watermelon is one bite at a time. And you break it down into small sections and you can focus on that rather than the whole thing. And also, the original plan we came up with when we showed it to the Army Corps of Engineers, it was beyond their budget. So we said, we've got to get this thing down into minimal sizes where we can get, apply for grants.
Yeah, when I sat there and listened to the corps presentation that, down in Stanford, what I was, what hit me was that they were going to open this up to broader range, Fairfield County and New Haven County, looking at all the communities. I was sitting there thinking that with all the work you all have done, that we are much further ahead than any of the other communities along there. If you had a chance to talk to other communities, anybody gone through this much work effort and anywhere close to this kind of plan?
I don't know. I haven't, I really haven't spoken with my counterparts in other towns. Perhaps it's something we should do.
That might not be bad to reach out. A, they may have come across some of the same issues and found some, either some other sources of grants or potentially some other ways to attack some of these problems. So I would think some sharing there might be helpful on that side.
Yeah, as you go east, you have less tidal change than you do when you go west, and it affects things differently.
Yep, I just, you got, just look at the amount of work you've done. If nothing else, sharing it with them might be beneficial to them. I don't know if, if they haven't gotten into it as much, it may not be as beneficial to us, but I think there's the possibility.
And then whatever you come up with, because it's along the coast, you've got to go through the whole alphabet of permits, which are years. They don't, they don't move real quick.
There's nothing easy about what we're looking at doing. And again, that's why I compliment the effort you guys have put in in terms of staying with it this long, going through all these things. I would like, I would ask you to do some additional public meetings and let's work on publicizing those better.
Yeah, when you and I...
Certainly the folks, Mr. Grauer, that you and I met with last night would like to hear more about this, so.
Yes. Mike attended a new neighborhood association called Fairfield Beach Peninsula Association because the people along the peninsula of Fairfield Beach Road were concerned because we came up with a 12-point plan and it doesn't include them. And they had some other, some other issues. And I was also at the meeting last night, we pointed out to them, they're not protectable from flooding. They have other issues that our board has to look at, and it's basically erosion. They're losing beach area. And as Mike will attest to, their big concern was taxes last night. Their property values have gone down and their taxes have gone up, and they're not happy.
Yep, well, we're working on that. But in the meantime, we still have some flood and erosion work to do here, which is under the jurisdiction of your board.
Yes, it is. Our big thing there is erosion. We haven't taken it off the board. We just, we've basically been focused on stopping the flooding more than the erosion.
This is, this is a big enough watermelon to try and eat for the moment. No argument there.
Uh-huh. And we're trying to get it bite by bite. Hopefully, we'll get that segment one where the self-regulating tide gate is on a town property, get that elevation raised so we can stop the water coming in there. We've, I've also spoken to the homeowner, I believe his name is Mr. Capizello. Right where you go into the Marina on Turney Road, he's the first, last house on the right. Driveway does go up on an elevation. When the water comes in to the marshes to the left of the road there, it comes across the road, comes on Turney Road into the neighborhood there. If he's agreed to raising Turney Road, so long as it doesn't go above the height of his garage, which would stop, again, some of your early flooding. Keep in mind, if outside this wall, in my analogy here, is Long Island Sound, and all the windows are wide open, the water's coming in here pretty quick. Every time we close a window, or close it halfway, we've reduced the flow of water coming into the room. When we get them all closed, we're dry. We're trying to close some of the windows, some of the holes.
Okay. Mr. Grauer, thank you for the update. Is there any further questions for the board?
Not a question, but I wanted to thank you as well and your board for all this hard work and commitment that you put into this. We certainly appreciate that.
We're happy to do it.
Absolutely. And you folks just talked about many of the points that I thought I was going to make, but without repeating those things, I do like the, the concept going forward of trying to get more, you know, homeowners, more business owners, more stakeholders down there to be part of your process. Because the more people that let you know what they want or what they need or what problems they're having or what ideas they have to fix things, the better off we're all going to be. And as you look, as you look up and down here, when you go from one all the way down to 12, you know, there's a lot of people that are adjoining each other, and they all have different opinions. They have different problems, different issues, different thoughts, some like this, some like that.
Another reason we broke up into the segments.
Yeah, so, which leads me into my other comment about, I like the fact that one of your next steps, I mean, there's a lot of important ones here, the communications and the emails and the groups and getting people together to help you go forward, but the fact that you're going to go out and identify, you know, the lowest areas first and come up with a list, a grouping of them, and be able to prioritize them and start chipping away at them. Because it sounds like the big picture's going to take longer than anyone would ever want it to take, but you can still chip away at these things and close a few windows along the way.
At our, at our public meetings, it was questioned as to how we set our priorities. And we made it real simple. Our priority is wherever there's money. It all, it all should be done, but we've been chasing the availability of money first.
Right.
Because if we can get the money to close one of the windows, let's go for it. That window should be closed first, but someone's wanting to give me money to close the middle window, I'm going to close the middle window.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Slap and Marvin?
Yeah, no, I thank you for all of your very hard work, and you have been successful, you know, taking some of those bites, closing those windows a little bit with grants, and I applaud your efforts and also the amount of research and work that you've put into this. And I would just say that, I think it was Mr. Tetro, share the wealth with other towns, see what they're doing, because we can, we can really probably learn from what, they may have gone through some of this, but not everything. And you can share that knowledge all the way up and down the shoreline would be tremendous, I think.
Well, I've been fortunate to be appointed as the chairman of a very dedicated board that's worked very hard on this, and I can't take the credit for this stuff. It's really the board that's put the effort into it and with the help of Joe and his staff.
Mr. Grauer, thank you. And let's, let's talk about getting some better publicity on another couple of meetings.
Be happy.
Obviously, we get to talk to our, the group from last night.
Yeah.
And I think one of your members, if you're going to say something, you need to come up to the mic.
Just a quick comment on publicity. I think what happened was, we realized it a little late in the game, and as everything else, it takes time. I mean, I did have some conversation with Kathleen Griffin in your office about press releases, and it just didn't happen. I do want to acknowledge, I called Mr. Spino, and he was very gracious to get an announcement on Fair TV on very short notice, so that, that helped in some way. We tried, the second time we do it, it'll be better.
Yep, that's good. With a little bit of planning, I think we can make sure that we bring all the horses to bear on that.
And just to go back to Mr. Kyler's question, like $5 million for the pumping station, not the $7 million.
Thank you very much.
All right. Again, thank you very much. Thank you very much for your work.
Thanks, guys. Good update.
Thank you.
Rick, if you could take down the maps for a bit, thank you. And then, next up, from the Director of Public Works, and this is going to require going to the Board of Finance and RTM for approval to hear, consider, and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Director of Public Works. Whereas it is in the best interest of the town of Fairfield to complete a wastewater facilities planning study, including an overall comprehensive evaluation of the water pollution control facilities, collection system, pump stations, and whereas the cost of preparing such a study is $748,000, $748,205, and whereas $740,944 is eligible for a 55% reimbursement through a federal EPA Clean Water Fund Planning Grant, and 50% of the remaining balance, $170,253, will be funded by the Water Pollution Control Authority Reserve Balance. Now therefore, be it resolved that the town of Fairfield appropriate $170,253 toward the cost of preparing a wastewater facilities planning study. Further resolved that Michael C. Tetro, First Electman of the town of Fairfield, is duly authorized to enter into and sign contracts on behalf of the town of Fairfield and the State of Connecticut's Department of Energy and Environmental Protection for the purpose of obtaining a federal EPA Clean Water Fund Planning Grant. And further resolved that the First Electman is authorized to provide such additional information and execute such other documents as may be required by the state or federal government in connection with said contracts, and to execute any amendments, rescissions, and revisions thereto to secure said grant. And further resolved that a bond resolution entitled a resolution appropriating $748,205 for costs associated with a wastewater facilities planning study, including a comprehensive evaluation of the town's water pollution control facility, collection system, and pump station, and authorizing the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation, be and hereby is approved. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second.
Second.
And I believe we have some changes in wording here. Mr. Michelangelo, okay if we change, make the changes in wording first, just to get that administrative piece out of the way, or did you have some comments ahead of time?
No, no, I won't.
All right. Have you both had a chance to look at the amendments and the wording clarifications?
Mm-hmm.
And just to clarify, these are not changing the intent of what was just read, but they are clarifying it and making the wording line up a little bit better.
Do you want to read the revised language?
Well, why don't we, why don't we take, I've got these kind of one step at a time here.
Okay.
With your permission, I'll, I'll step through these.
Sure.
So part one, and I'd like to propose an amendment... So, part one, and I'd like to propose an amendment to the resolution. Part one would be deleting two paragraphs. Paragraph two and three, in what I just read. And we, and the motion would also be to replace those two with one paragraph, and that paragraph would read, whereas the cost of preparing such a study is $748,205, and where $740,944 is eligible for a 55% reimbursement, which totals $407,519, $407,919, through a federal EPA Clean Water Fund Planning Grant. And the remaining balance of $340,686 is to be split equally between the Water Pollution Control Authority and the Town of Fairfield. So that would replace the two paragraphs just deleted.
A second, then.
And do you want to do the third one just part of that?
Oh, you want to do it all at once? Sure.
I'm thinking. Item three is looking at the, what was the fourth paragraph, and say that further resolve that Michael C. Tetro, First Electman of the Town of Fairfield, is duly authorized to enter into and sign contracts on behalf of the Town of Fairfield and the State Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. Missing a word there. For the purpose of obtaining a federal EPA Clean Water Fund Planning Grant. Jen, I'm not sure what's different about that. Did I miss something on that?
Kathleen provided that, so I don't know.
Oh, okay. So what we want to do on that one is it's not the whole paragraph, it's just changing the wording from further resolve to now therefore be it resolved.
Got it.
Okay, so that's now therefore be it resolved.
Be it resolved. That's the only difference.
And then, further down the second-to-last sentence, where it says Department of Energy, it says Department of Energy and Protection. I believe it's supposed to be Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. So we should probably make that change at the same time. Is everybody clear on those changes?
Mm-hmm.
Jen, do you have those down?
I do, but I do want to take your worry that you replaced item for paragraphs two and three, if I could take that. Thank you so much. And I have all.
All right, so any, this is mostly a wording change, what I'd call an administrative amendment, just to make this read better and be clearer. We're not changing the intent or anything else about the project. Any further discussion or comments on that? Did I get a second?
Yes.
Did you give me a second?
I did.
Okay. Are we comfortable?
Yeah.
Any comments from the public on the amendment? The amendment only, please. Seeing none, we're back to the board. Are we ready to vote on that?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So the item as amended is before us. Mr. Michelangelo, the floor is yours.
Thank you. If facilities plans are, as good practice, something that wastewater treatment plants and systems should do on approximately 20-year horizons, and not only is it good practice, in our case, it's written into our permit, that once we reach 95, 90% of our flow, our average flow, it triggers the need to this. And we've been beyond that point. So both from a timing standpoint, we're in about year 18 of the old plan, and from a flow standpoint, we're over 90% of our flow down at the plant. It's time to do a facilities plan. The WPCA has been in the process of moving this along for probably the last year. They issued requests for qualifications, probably had 10 responders, we interviewed four, we selected a firm, we negotiated terms with the firm, we did that in conjunction with the DEEP, since they were going to be our funding partner on this. And just as, as far as the, it is a lot of money to spend, but our, as I told you, our sewer system and our plant is, you know, probably $100 million down the plant and much more than that, around 205 miles of town. So this looks at our entire system, the conveyance system and our treatment system. First exercise is, okay, project what we're Fairfield look like in five years, 10 years, 20 years, and that's in conjunction with a lot of our other agencies, planning and zoning, economic development, Health Director, what we need to service other areas. So once you get the projections on what the town will need from a flow standpoint, you look at your treatment plant as far as capacity, processes, different permit limits, and a lot of it is just the age of the, the age of the equipment down there and also the technology. So some of the equipment down there was replaced in the last upgrade, some of it dates back to the previous upgrade. So that'll be the exercise this time. Once we get the rules and the, the projections going forward, you literally look at every process on a 20-year horizon and you say, does this portion of the wastewater treatment plant need to change? Does it need to be revised? Does it need to be increased? Does it need a whole different method? And if the answer is, the mechanism there is sufficient for now, well, when is it going to see its useful life? In five years, 10 years, and 15 years? And that's when you start making decisions on which portions to need to be replaced, which ones will last further into your planning horizon, so what needs to be done immediately, what will need to be done during the process, and what will easily last you another 20 years. So that's what the, the process is, and it leads to a lot of, you know, answers to some of our questions down the road. You know, what will the plant need? Will it need an upgrade? Will it need an expansion? Our conveyance system, what's our biggest need in our conveyance system? We have an east trunk line, which is basically in the Ash Creek River, Ash Creek, Rooster River area behind the Board of Ed. That's where we suspect we're getting a lot of our extraneous flow. This will evaluate that, come up with possibly new methods to avoid that problem. So there's a whole host of issues in front of us, which this will go a long way towards pointing in the direction where we go.
All right. Any questions for the board?
No.
I do. So we're at year 18 of this 20-year horizon you mentioned? Okay, so timing-wise, if we, this went through and got approval, we would be doing this in the next two years or year?
Well, we'd start, you know, with the, we still have to go through the, the other boards.
Right.
And that may take till the end of August. I'm not sure about the schedule of those boards. So as soon as the approvals are in place, we'll start that immediately. And the, you know, the process, the, this, this, this study should be substantially completed probably in about a year. So by year from the start date, we'll have a lot of the answers. Generally, it takes about another six months after that just to do the final reviews and the, the final documents. And that's basically our roadmap of, you know, where do we go after that horizon? But the, the triggering mechanism is, you know, the, the, the 20 years is not an absolute. So we're, you know, we're probably on the, yeah, we're right at the proper stage, timing-wise we're.
And how old is the facility itself?
The, well, the facility was first built in the early 1950s, and it underwent two major expansions since then, the last one being probably 2003, which a large part of that was for denitrification, which became a concern in the, the early 2000s. So there, yeah, there are pieces of concrete at the facility there which are, you know, 75 years old, give or take 65 years old. And, you know, I don't think any of the pumps or equipment down there is that old, but there are some, there are pumps and machinery now there that's easily, you know, 40, 45 years old that, you know, that passed the test, you know, last time around, but most likely won't pass it this time around.
Okay. So we're really looking at trying to catch anything now so that we don't incur issues or larger costs down the road. We kind of look at where we are and look at where we're going as a town in terms of growth, et cetera.
Correct. And there's, there's a lot of efficiencies to scale of doing it at, at one time. And, you know, I use it for like an I-95 scenario. The plant has to treat flow during construction, just like the highway has to treat construction, has to treat.
Traffic.
Traffic. And one thing you don't want to do in traffic or is be constantly in a, in a construction mode. You don't want to rebuild one part one year and then two years another part and then another. So there's some economies of scale of doing it all in one time. And there are things in this process here, there are advantages to doing all at one time, because, you know, not only does Clean Water Fund pay for, pay for this portion of it, we anticipate that when there comes times, comes time for a upgrade in the future, they will be funding a portion of that.
I see.
And generally, they do it at the, you know, the minimum of 20%. Occasions, they blow into 30% of the construction part. And not that you want to build up your project as much as possible, but even for non-sewer issues, and this is, you know, we are concerned about the plant, the flow of the plant. But there are other infrastructure down there, like fences and parking lots and roofs and stuff. Well, it's in our best interest, not that we're trying to pad the project, but if we have to do a roof, it's better to incorporate it in a comprehensive project and say, we're only concerned about treating wastewater. So those are questions much further down the line. But that's some of the, some of the advantages to, to looking at everything all at once and planning everything all at once.
And you probably wouldn't be eligible for grants if there was something, expansion, et cetera, that we needed to do without this study. So one goes with the other, and to not do the study would potentially mean that we wouldn't have access to monies in the future.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
Joe, I've got to ask, it looks like we're planning on splitting the town match on this. Can you tell me, give us a little education as to what the discussion was around that and how that number of 50/50 was arrived at?
Okay. And, you know, we've had, we had about.
Mr. Kylie, please chime in. I didn't mean to cut you off on that.
Sure. And we probably had about three of these parallel discussions, because as you know, we had a couple, we had the hardening project and the microgrid project come before the, all, all the boards within the last several months. And, you know, once again, there was no science behind splitting it or no mathematical calculations, just, you know, the conceptual feeling that, you know, that the, the people that are connected to the sanitary sewer system, and there is approximately 16,000, 16,500 connections to the sewer system. So I don't know what the number of houses is, but probably 4,000 or 5,000 is not. But with the theory that even if you're not connected to the sewer system, there's some benefit to having a clean Fairfield, whether or not you're, you know, clean waters and Long Island Sound and our, you know, avoid overflow. So it wasn't scientific, but just the rationale that, that the users of the system, like myself, have some benefit and somebody that lives in an unsuited area also reaps some benefit from it also.
That's a reasonable explanation. It was kind of a cost-sharing conversation, and the WPCA wanted to participate, and it was consistent with some of the recent conversations we had had in the outcomes of them at like a 50/50 participation. So it wasn't all, it wasn't all coming out of the WPCA Reserve Fund, and it wasn't all coming out of the taxpayers', you know, checkbook, so.
Joe, if you had a chance to talk to our finance department to see how we would propose funding the $170,000 and change that the town would be asked to put up for this?
I believe it was worded so it could, so it can be bonded, but I haven't specifically asked what the strategy is from the finance.
Okay. Why don't you and I and Mr. Mayor sit down and have that conversation at some point?
And this, can I just ask you a question? Going back in time, you know, 18 years ago or whenever the last study was done, how was that funded? Was it a similar mix with the town and the WPCA and the grants, et cetera?
Specifically, I don't know about the, the facilities plan. WPCA members who were on the board have said that it was totally funded by the town side, but that's just anecdotally, I'm not aware of specifically how it was funded. I don't know how far back the WPCA rates go back either, right?
What do you mean by that?
I don't know what year it was that the, that the user fees were created for the WPCA. Does that go back beyond 20 years?
I know assessments go back much further than that.
Yeah.
And I know it did.
Assessments.
When we moved, when we moved in the house I grew up in, it was originally on sewer, on septic, and then they put the sewer lines in. I forget how old I was, but I was probably going to Hollen Hill School or something at that point, just a frame of reference.
That's at least 10 years ago.
Yeah. A little over that, a little over that. So somewhere in there. Now, I, I know there were assessments at that point, because I just, I don't know if there are sewer user fees.
User fees, right.
I would think they would start around the same time.
Yeah.
But that's just my guess. That's not anything substantive.
Okay.
Can we, can we find out? Is there a way for us to find out? How, I'm just curious, just so that we can have some perspective, and the other boards also will probably ask the question.
I think that's a good, those are good answers to have. All right. Any other questions from the board at this point? Any questions from the public? All right. Seeing none, back to the board. Any further discussion? Are you ready to vote?
Yes.
Okay. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Michelangelo, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, next item up is the tax collector. To consider and act upon tax refunds as recommended by the tax collector and the amount recommended, may I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second. I'll second it. Any adjustments or amendments?
Mr. First Electman, Mr. Kylie, we don't have the actual information from the assessor's office to make an amendment at this time.
Can we just do it at the 15th?
I'm assuming we can, so.
Okay. Let's just do it then.
Sure.
All right. And I think we can just, we've got a motion. I think we just take no action? Or do we have a motion before us and we have to clear it?
Don't we have to remove, withdraw the motion?
Okay. Good. So the motion's withdrawn.
Second.
So we don't have to take any action. Next up, to hear, consider and act upon any communications, and we have none that I know of. To hear, consider and act upon any other business that should probably become for this meeting. None that I know of. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
A second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Congratulations and thank you. Happy Fourth of July.
Happy Fourth of July. That's okay. I'm going to keep this though.